Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, July the twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four, and the special city council meeting of Bel Air Beach will now come to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Renee, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City manager Kyle Ruffler.
Here.
And city attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. We have one item on the agenda tonight. That is consideration of B twenty-three dash zero one Drainage and Street Improvement Project Change Order Number One and Driveway Adjustment Options. I'm going to go to the city manager, and I'm going to let him take over and explain what's going on, and then we're going to go to Mr. Flutie. And we're going to listen to his comments, and then before we go to council debates, since this is the only item on the agenda, we'll go to citizen comments where all of you will have the opportunity to speak. Mr. Ruffler, you have you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So the main items are the change order, which would be our first change order from Harbor Contracting. And to give you a little history of how the project started and where we are now, we started up at Morgan Drive. And did the curb removal and replacement at Morgan, twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth. And just ran minor problems during the filling up in sections and matching driveways. And the concrete crew primarily using a level to to make sure that the curb had the adequate fall and the drainage was working properly. When we got to twenty-third street, they started hitting challenges where they were losing the the proper shape of the valley curb. And at one point, we were experiencing some puddling. So at that point, we had a meeting. We talked about what could be done. And they moved down to Palm, Cedar, and Spruce. They accomplished those streets, no issues. There's there's a very large amount of fall from Causeway Boulevard to the drains on the cul-de-sacs. And then they went up to Fourteenth, and again, ran into a problem. Start out where we had an inspector on site while they're pouring the concrete. The inspector observed the process that they were using at that point with the grade level forms. And and came to a decision that that they weren't getting the curb that they needed. It was it was coming out too flat. The water wasn't draining properly, and that the way that they need to move forward was to have designed grade stations so that they can lay the curb down precisely. So at that point, the construction halted, and Larry, Flutie, and the rest of Gemini Engineering crunched for about two and a half weeks putting together the plans that you see now as part of the agenda packet, and they lay out, and he'll run the further detail. They lay out exactly how the curb needs to go in. And it what it does is it pays into account the the existing greater street, but does not try to match up at each driveway along the way. There'll be some slight variations. He segmented it off to reduce the impact to driveways. But it's important to note that the curb won't be dependent on the driveways as the proper the prior method they were using sort of was, and that's where they're running into issues. So being being that way that you're going to end up at a parabola, and again, they'll go into the details. Site differences where the curb is either higher or lower than the driveway. We need to come up with, if it's concrete driveway, that's no easy fix. We go back, we pour a concrete apron that matches the driveway, and then, you know, very little impact. Paper driveways, that's where we're running with different options. In previous projects, we've never replaced people's paper driveways with with concrete. Some jurisdictions do that, but it's not something we've done in Bella Beach. From my experience in talking to residents, they 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 want to maintain the paper driveways, so it's important to them. I've met with Larry, and I wrote out some numbers showing possible two right away is allowed this this is where we put the right around ten feet, five feet, and two feet. In talking with him today and discussions, he feels that the average will be about three feet of paving set. So it shouldn't be to the extent of some of the the cost, the numbers that we're looking at, which would be a large portion of of as needed. That would come out of our contingency for the project, but we do need to discuss an accurate calculation of what we're expecting so that when it's all said and done, and we're telling the applications that, you know, we're not in shock at how much we spent on resetting papers. So I'll turn it over now to well, Larry Flutie to go over sort of what he designed with with the new the new plans, like what the process is going to be. And the big part of the change order you're going to see is is the cost for the survey and crew. So that's that's to have a professional surveying crew come to each street, stakeout, offsets, stations, all along the way that the contractor align up the the complete street of forms. And then pull it to that. Exactly. And then we feel this process is going to go a lot smoother and and end up with a better product for these streets. But I'll turn it over to Larry. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Flutie.
Thank you, Larry Flutie with Gemini Engineering. As the city managers discussing, we've been trying to work with the curbs and make sure we're getting the curbs that that we need to to make sure everything's drained, and then the connection.
Mr. Flutie, could you pull the microphone a little closer?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The so the design that we went through is that we went through each of the streets. We segmented the streets rather than taking one large sweep of grades and setting that. We went shorter in segments to make sure that we're matching grade at at frequent intervals. And then also can ensuring that we have a consistent drainage pattern from the high point to the low point. And I think I can take you to an example of one of the streets. This is Nineteenth Street. Yeah, okay. And so what some challenges that that we're having, particularly on this street is all the driveways are either up or down, and it's it's not one consistent slope down. So we had to really look at this at small intervals to make sure that the the grades are matching the driveways as close as we can and keeping that consistent flow. The bringing at one example in this location, right? The the grades consistently is flat on the west side. And then it flows down. And then on this location, it dips down, and then it flips back up once you get to the next driveway. So in trying to to work these, we we'd look at every so often areas where we can match the grade to match the the driveways. So that was the process that we looked at on each street, each driveway, and looked at them so that we can we can grade this to where we can minimize the impacts to the driveways and making sure that we have a consistent flow pattern. And with that, when doing this, and we've we've got the, and that's what we do, we're working on the grading, we got the grading calculations and and the elevation set. And with the regrading, we're able to get within, worst case, a half inch with the elevation of the driveway to the top of curve for the for the curb. So I think we we did a lot in correcting that. And so that those plans we put together, the contractor asked for cross-sections and some some benchmarks, which the surveyor has. So we we provided that information. And so the the plans that we put together shows that the impacts to the driveways are minimized and that the the grades are consistent, as as I've been saying. The what we're looking at here on the driveway aprons, and particularly when we're looking at aprons on the payers and what we can do there, you know, in replacing driveways, and particularly in the pavement, payers, is we were looking at behind the the curb to do a apron area to kind of give the limit about an impact to to each of those driveways. Based upon the height difference that we have for each of the driveways, then the concrete apron, we calculated to be anywhere from two feet to to three feet. And that would then give a reasonable slope from the back of the curb if it's in the higher or lower. A a slope that it's well within what the county standard is for driveway slopes. And I think when when looking at that, you know, the the plans that we prepared, we we looked at a two-foot apron. So that's on the plans that we we have. That's what we show on there. Now, I know there's maybe there may be more left. That's what more or less. That's what we prepared a memo for the city manager of what would be the cost for repair of impacted driveways for payers or concrete based upon a two-foot or a five-foot or ten-foot setback of what those cost impacts would be. And I think with that, that's how we went through this process, and that's how we've come up with the the amount of impacts to the driveways based upon the eight aprons. So it'd be from your, my standpoint is 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 the two-foot apron sufficient, or should we go to a a larger apron?
Counselor? Mr. Bankard.
If I heard you correctly, you know that you just recently went out and reevaluated these streets. You got the grading?
Yes.
Why wasn't that done when the initial proposal went out to do all these streets?
The the plan was that the contractor is going to use their level, and and what we've done here is keeping the maintaining the the elevations, the existing elevations, like I said, and making sure that we maintain that. And I they weren't able to maintain that. So what the requested is that, or our our inspector that was out there indicated that what they they need is the grade elevations so that they can then shoot those grade elevations, and then that will give them the grade and the elevation, be able to set the curb.
All right. So if the contractor wasn't able to maintain the elevations of the old design, is that what you're saying?
He wasn't able to get the curb section in. They were using the to be able to get the curb in.
Yeah, they were using a six-foot level.
Yes.
And they didn't use any transit to shoot the street and elevate it. Isn't that like a little bit neglect on their part? Isn't that neglect on their part?
I'm really don't didn't get into the means and methods, but they have the equipment to have done that, but at the one way of doing that would have been have a level and shoot the levels and and meet the grades. Pretty much what we've done here is we're meeting drills every every so often.
Well, I mean, today's not today's technologies. For the last twenty years, you've had the GPS transits where it shoots right on the right on the mark that you're shooting for. I mean, you know, it's it's not even a string bob anymore. But the other question I have is, you said all these driveways, some are higher, some are lower. Are these driveways within the last ten, fifteen years that were put in, or? Because I I'm wondering, I'm sure these driveways all had permits pulled before they were, and this isn't on your, wait, but you you get what I'm saying? Did the contractor that put these driveways in not file the grade that is needed to accept the street?
Well, the tough thing on, I don't know if they did or not, that may have.
Well, you said some were higher and some were lower.
And and the reason that may be is that the existing curb is higher and lower. So what what I'm seeing is that when they put that driveway in, whatever contractor did that, took the driveway and they matched the the curb better at that time. And with redoing this, trying to get the puddles out of the out of the curb, then some some of the curb had to be raised in order to get that flowed down. And that's that's primarily the reason why we have that situation.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
So going back to Nineteenth Street, which is the one you use as an example?
Yes.
So I drove all of the streets in this project shortly after we had the last decent rain event. And Nineteenth Street, as we all know, has basically ribbon curving there. It's flat. It's not a valley curve.
Right.
And all I can tell you is, after that big rain, there was no water sitting anywhere on that street.
Right.
So it's flowing properly. Now, I understand when we put in the the new asphalt for the street, there's going to be some elevation changes. But the last thing we want to do is create a scenario where a street had no flow issues. And after we complete the new street, we have flow issues. So I'm confident that's not going to happen when we go through that.
Right.
You had mentioned that there was like a a little low spot on Nineteenth Street. But again, for whatever reason, if there is one based on the shots that were taken, that water is disappearing. And there may be some people here tonight that may want to talk on that, but it was, I go again, I drove all the streets. I can tell you the contractor did a terrific job on the three streets over here, because again, right after that rain event, no water on the street, no water in the gutters. Morgan, twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth, for the most part, no water there. Now, interestingly enough, when I drove through the other streets that haven't really been done yet, the old gutters retain water. Nothing else significance.
Right.
But there's some over time, obviously, there's probably been some sediment there, that type of thing, which is going to create some water there, but it was very, very small in depth.
Right.
Anywhere across there. The infamous Twenty-third Street on the south side, from my perspective, and I've had multiple conversations with our city manager, it appears that part of that problem is due to the county out on Gulf Boulevard. That water is just sitting there even today, and it hasn't rained in three or four days or more. I'm not sure many days.
Right.
But the water from a week ago is still there. And when I first saw it, it was not only right there at the corner of Gulf Boulevard and the south side of Twenty-third Street. It kind of wrapped around. But it's obvious that the construction of the new gutters was not causing that, because now there's no water there. There's still water on Gulf Boulevard at that corner. And you're confident in the conversations with the city manager that the county is going to step up and do what they need to do so that water moves however it needs to move. I think it's going to be a challenge for them. They may have to put in another drain line or something like that. Because I was surprised to see that when you continued further south on Gulf Boulevard down to Twenty-Second Street, there's only a drain there on the south side of Twenty-Second Street.
Right.
There's not anything on the north side of Twenty-Second Street, which if there was one there, and they repaired the drainage direction on Gulf Boulevard to go more towards Twenty-Second Street, and that was captured by a drain on the north side of Twenty-Second Street, I think that problem would go away, and they can probably fix that. So that that'll be great.
Yeah.
So, you know, we did meet with the county out there on that, and when we were looking at the curb work and and what we're doing in our interaction there on Gulf Boulevard on each of the streets.
Okay.
And that is ones one of the items we talked about. Of course, they didn't have an answer at that point, but I think it's something we need to be talking with the county about.
Perfect, perfect. It looks like, for example, when I looked at Twelfth and Thirteenth Street, there were various options, I guess, that were that were put in there. Some of the areas where there was a concrete driveway, they did not extend the apron at all. They just cut it right there and put the valley curb right up edge to edge, and all was good. Some of the driveways, they put in anywhere from a two-foot apron up to what looked like about a ten-foot apron into that existing driveway, I'm assuming so that they could make the elevations work properly so that the water would drain.
That's what they did.
Yeah, there is. There is still a little bit of water on the valley curves on Twelfth and Thirteenth Street, but nothing astronomical. I mean, it's just normal. You know, it's going to sit there for maybe a day. And if it doesn't rain, and we have the heat that we typically have, that's going to evaporate, and it's not going to be a big deal. So it didn't appear to me that there were any existing valley gutter issues on Twelfth and Thirteenth Street in front of any of the driveways. Just when you get down to the very easterly part, and that looks like something that can be changed. Again, I talked with the city manager, and I think that can be adjusted down there so that water actually.
Excuse me, excuse me, Jim. I'm going to ask that you withhold the conversation while we have this meeting. Okay? Thank you very much.
So when we end everything tonight, I just want to be comfortable that the contractor is comfortable with the redesign and and we're that we feel comfortable that this thing's going to work out with with the new surveying data and information. And I also want to feel comfortable that the contractor still feels that that's necessary, because it is a fair amount of money that we're adding to the project for that more detailed survey every ten feet stations approximately. So all of the other streets were done, obviously, and they were done well, I feel. So I just want to make sure that it still is necessary, and and I realize I don't want the contractor to be in a difficult position to where he and his company feel like it's going to be difficult for them to continue on the remaining streets without that new surveying information before we approve it.
Right.
That's what I'm looking for.
My discussions with the contractor and with the grading that we're giving, that it's really going to help their process in getting that in. So it is going to help provide the information they need to put the curb in. So it is going to help uh provide the information they need to put the curb in. And making sure that we're meeting the grades that we need. So I think, yes, it it is helping them and it will. Uh, help uh us to deliver the uh the curb that we intended.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Shaw Elliott.
Excuse me. Um, I would estimate just roughly that we are about a third through the total project. We had streets done before. We have this segment of about ten streets or so, and there are more streets to be done. Correct. So for those that were done prior to this approach. Do you foresee any problems with those streets that are already completed?
The ones that that uh have been completed, I. We looked at each of those, so they're they're done satisfactory. And and like I said before, reason we had to change the processes that. When they were getting up to fourteenth street, they were having, there were issues in trying to get the section in. But what's been done, particularly out here on uh. On the streets that that they've already completed. We looked at those and so they they passed, and that's why we started the pavement. So when. Uh, when on those that they have completed, they're good.
All right. So those that are yet to be done. Do you anticipate a a different approach for those or any cost implications for the remaining streets?
For the rest of the streets and being the grays and and what we're doing here, this should should complete the project with without any issues.
Yeah, that's that's good news.
Okay, so did you have more comments?
Well, just one, um, I was a little confused at the beginning. Did you ask whether we thought two foot? Uh. The uh, the two feet would be sufficient for the apron, or what is your opinion about that?
The two, I've looked at the differences on the on the uh, the height of the. Curb versus where the existing uh driveways came into. And tried to come up with what would be a good. Instead of having no aprons, one foot on one side, four feet on the other. We wanted to have a consistent apron that would capture what needed to be done. And I think with the with the information, the way that the the grades that we have it, the two foot apron should. Would and will capture uh that differences in that connection to the driveway.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so I I just want to make sure that I fully understand what it is that you're.
Hmm.
Uh, you're trying to accomplish and uh and and what the hurdles are you're having to to jump over. Uh, so first off, uh, not every driveway is the same grade. Obviously, there's issues with that. Um. At the time that the driveways are made, they're they're designed to match whatever they're dealt with. So the curb that's already there, they match up to that. And then whenever you rip out the curbs. You no longer have really anything to go on except for what's left behind. Okay. Then uh to compensate, uh, because you're wanting to now shoot a level. All the way down the street and you're trying to make sure that water drains evenly all the way down. So as you. Encounter these various grades, it may or may not need the apron. And the apron is basically a wraparound of the curb, extends into the driveway. And keeps the water from from going to one side or the other. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then in the case of the people that have um. Uh, spent a lot of money on pavers and they've gone above and beyond to beautify their driveway. Somehow or another, those papers have to fit within the constraints of those aprons. Is that is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then your plan is is um, and it's, I believe it's included in this cost, is if. It extends into the paver area that you plan to remove the pavers. I'm assuming clean, clean the concrete, whatever's holding them down on the edges.
Hmm.
And then put them back the way that you found them. Is that is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So what happens if pavers get broke and they're high dollar pavers and uh. They're nowhere to be found. What what's the solution for that?
The tough thing on that is if they're old papers, they may. Still be available, they may not be available. Most most cases, they may not be available. And and that's the tough thing, and that's. One of, I think one of the items that drove the concrete apron. Uh, scenario is that if we provided a concrete apron. Uh, on uh, on the driveways and particularly the paper driveways. That will help alleviate that problem, but there isn't any way of. Trying to match a an existing paver with.
Yeah, of course not.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I again, I'm just trying to make sure I fully understand what we're uh. Uh, what we're being asked about. And so you're saying on average. Uh, you're asking for a two foot apron, but in some cases it may be as much as a five foot apron. Do you see that as the maximum that you would have to go?
Yeah, there's only one or two cases where it'd be. Uh, five foot, I mean, you know, but yeah, two, a two foot apron is. Is the majority is is more likely what most people will see.
Are there any situations to where an apron, uh, a two foot apron is not required at all? Where you're going to be able to just come in there cleanly and let's just say you're slightly behind the curb. Or is it a majority of them? You need at least two feet.
No, I mean, there are cases, and if you look at the actual grades and how we're doing this, yeah, we're going to have situations where it could be less than two feet. It may be. Six inches or or less. But uh. The purpose of this. I guess is looking at that is having a consistent apron for for all the streets.
I understand.
To go.
I understand where you're going with this. Okay. And. Let's just say that, uh, and I'm I'm just throwing out all the various scenarios. Let's just say that, okay, we establish a standard, but then if the homeowner says. Well, I don't want to adhere to this standard and. I'm, I don't want you doing this. What's the alternative for the homeowner? How would they? Would would we throw it back at them and say, okay, well, we're going to stop at. Six inches behind the curb and it's all on you. Is 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 that even feasible because you're asking for aprons and the aprons would not be there now?
Well, it'd be, um.
Would all the water drain in their yard, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, the. If it's not there and it drains, I mean, it it could be in the majority of cases that it could work out. The, but the uh. If we don't, then yeah, I mean, it could uh cause erosion at the where it's where it's at. Trying to get into the curb, you can cause erosion issues there at that point.
Okay, so you're asking for a standard, um. Two feet or five feet basically, and you say that there's some that absolutely they need five feet to get this job done. So if we voted to do a two foot. Uh, uh, let's call it a setback, uh, uh, or a um. Two foot repair job. Okay, well, it's not a standard if we've got someone else here and there. So it's not really a standard. And so um. I I'm not sure if I one hundred percent agree with the standard because I'm not really sure that we even have. I don't think we have a standard now.
Hmm.
And and if you look at every person's driveway in Bel Air Beach, everyone is different. Um. Personally, I prefer a standard because it would be easier for us. But I also have to um consider everyone. Uh, in in the rest of the city and not just what's easiest for us. Um, if there's no other comments from the council at this moment, I'd like to go to the citizens.
Just just one question. You're not widening that driveway, you're just taking your apron back anywhere from two feet to five.
Right.
You're going to be digging up the pavers, pouring concrete.
For the apron, yes.
I put some crushed concrete down, crushed stone. I'm sorry, you're not. We're not widening anybody's driveway. We're just pushing out this apron anywhere from two to five feet. So my question is, you're going to have to lift the pavers up. You're going to have to dig down, we're going to either crush concrete or modify down and then pour an apron.
Yes.
Why can't you use the existing paper, pavers? Dig them up, put the elevation incorrectly and use the uh existing pavers as your uh apron. Which is, which it is now. Technically, it just doesn't look like an apron.
I'd have to work with the contractor to do that. I mean, can it be done? I probably, and if they're in good shape and they don't fall apart on us, yeah. That could be done if they're good.
They did my street, they did first street to eighth street.
Yeah.
Um. I had very few. Pavers, I didn't have any pavers cracked. I had some. Around bricks, bricks around the pavers, but retaining bricks, I had a couple of them cracked. That was about it.
Right.
They were easy to find too.
It's usually where they're concreted in. Those are the ones that they get damaged.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the pavers probably are, the pavers are probably in good condition. It's going to be the out outlining retaining bricks. That's generally easy to find. So why can't we just appease this audience? Put the driveways back to where they were and make this thing work.
Something to consider. Uh, would any other council members like to comment? Yes, Ms. Shaw Elliott.
Mr. Flutie, in your series of photos, do you have a photo or an illustration of what this would look like?
I don't have a photo, uh, but it. The, you're talking about the concrete apron?
Right, an illustration or anything in these plans?
You you can, you know, there's sidewalks that go through neighborhoods. And, you know, alongside the streets and that concrete, you know, go across the driveway. But it'd be part of this, but it looked just like, it looked like a sidewalk.
Right.
You know, only two foot.
You can go down H H Street, one eighteen H Street. They did it. They did it to his house, but he had a concrete driveway.
Right.
And they put it. Probably two and a half foot apron.
Yeah.
It looks nice, but he didn't have toes.
Right.
You know?
Yeah. Uh, in the case of my next door neighbor, he just favored everything and it goes right up to the curb. And um, he would be pretty upset if uh we tried to do this on twenty second street. Uh, so if there are no other comments at the moment, yes, Mr. Roberts, and then I'm going to go to citizen comments.
Perfect. So I just want to clarify the um, the paper question about breakage. So already. We've had a contractor complete effectively six streets, right? The three over here. And Morgan twenty fifth, twenty fourth. So there's been various homes on those six streets that had papers. Those papers were removed in order for the new gutters to go in. And replaced. So my question is, in those six streets, from the contractor's perspective. Did we have any issues with breaking papers?
I'll have to asking that the uh, but I have not heard of any issues.
Okay.
Like that.
Cause they.
I can verify that with the contractor.
They've all been put back in.
Yes.
And they look nice.
Right.
Yeah. And I think just to try to clarify a little bit, if I understand this correctly, which I think I do, with the um, with the apron, so. The goal is to tie in the edge of the apron with the edge of the curb. Which is now going to be at a different elevation. And then that elevation from that point on the apron will tie back into. The driveway wherever it was cut, whether it's two feet, five feet, ten feet, whatever that is.
That's correct.
So that's the whole purpose of having that apron so you can get it back in. It may not be a completely. Um, consistent slope at that point because you're going from the gutter. At some angle to tie back in. And the reason you're putting that apron in there on an existing concrete driveway. Is just to try to again, get at the appropriate elevation at the edge of the um, valley curve. And tie back in to the existing driveway at some distance so that at least it looks normal.
Right, yeah.
A- and the point there is, you're going, when you make that apron and you bring it up to your curb. You're going to have to either saw cut it to the curb or.
Yeah.
Make make it a, it's going to be two separate pieces.
Yes.
It's going to crack. So again, why don't we just put the pavers, dig it up, put the pavers back? And I, and we've had streets and Kyle, you were the assistant manager, we had streets done. I don't think Lynn had a problem with any pavers being broke. We did have bricks break, but they were easily replaced. So we did eight streets this way and it worked out. Those pavers are, those 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 pavers are generally around two and a half inches thick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, at this time, I'm going to call for citizen comments, um. I have some rules for you tonight, which is we are not asking questions. Instead, we are making statements and you are to address the council. You are not to address Mr. Flutie, you are not to address the uh, city manager. Um, you'll be limited to three minutes. Uh, you're free to uh, speak your mind on this and uh. Uh, whenever you I call on you, please come up, give us your name and the street you live on. And uh, and your uh, your house number. And uh, and we'll start comments now. So would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir, please come up. Uh, Mr. Flutie, if you don't mind, just step off to the side and uh, let's give this gentleman the microphone.
My name's Jerry Hawkins. I'm at one oh seven nineteenth street. And I do have papers and when I had them installed, I had my own curbs which surrounds all the papers. And those pavers go right up to your curves. Now, when this project started, I went down to twenty fourth, twenty fifth, twenty sixth street. And they, because they said they were going to saw cut. But when I went down there, they were only saw cutting about four inches into the pavement. Um, to the pavement side of it, so they could dig the pavement out so they could pull the curbs out. So I had a American concrete come out and cut along the curb and my and my curb. So that would not be disturbed. So uh, I guess I don't want my driveway nor my curb uh affected. Um. I guess, I guess that's my position.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I also went around and looked at um, uh, twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth, twenty sixth, and I took pictures of other. Um, pavers and they all look great. Um, you know, I don't see anything broken. Whoever did the first job on those streets did a good job. Yeah. So I, but I just don't want mine disturbed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name's Tony and I'm on fourteenth street, one oh nine. So thank you for taking the time to help mitigate the issue on the street. I know it's not easy. Um, so. My thing is, kind of my little disappointment here is not seeing what an apron looks like, like not. Having that because that was my hope to come here, like, what's this look like? I don't have a paver driveway, but I know it's more concerning for other people in the street. I'm thinking of getting one at some point. I've lived here over twenty years. And now I'm wondering, for those that are thinking of that. What do you do now with the apron there and you want to do that? Do you not touch the apron and your pavers only go to that point? As well? Because I I really don't understand the apron thing. Of course, I went on the internet and looked at it. But I don't know the dynamics of this. I was expecting a little more. You know, just visuals of what this thing really is going to be. So that's all. So if that can be like followed up on. As far as what that would really look like and I think it was mentioned on eighteen street or something like that or one oh eight, wherever. Um, that there is an apron somewhere. So if that can just be shared somehow, some way. Um, just to see what it is, that's all. Yep. And then. You know, just really dynamics of an apron. I'm looking at this thing wondering like, okay, this is a driveway. What's? How does an apron change what we have right now? So.
Thank you, sir. I'm uh, I'm sure that we'll uh, attempt to address your uh, your comments uh, whenever we go into debate.
All right, great, thanks.
Other citizens, would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, please come up. Give us your name and address.
Alfred Mindell from four, fourteenth street. One oh four. Um. So I just guess wanna say that I heard a lot about making the pitch, I guess essentially what we're talking about here for the runoff. I know at the end of the street, and I have a vested interest in that property at the end of the street as well, um, already is flooding, we have heavy rains. So I'm concerned that any changes to the elevations is going to increase that flooding and increase damage to my property. At the end of that street. So I urge that that be taken into account, you know, in there after the survey, if there's gonna be any simulations run to see what the. You know, impact is going to be to the rest of the properties. Additionally, can you please clarify somewhere to some of the other comments, if we do decide to put an apron in, will that? Be a consistent look and if so, maybe we'll at the forehand so we can assess what any impact to the paver driveways will be further? And I'm sorry, that was a question, but um. Will we be able to remove that apron? I think that was the question, just asked in the future if we do decide to put a paver driveway in. Will you please clarify that? Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if we can get that up on the screen, but that's the apron they put in on H Street.
Okay, let's, let's get through the citizen comments and then we'll, we'll get it up there. Okay. Yes, sir, please come up.
Good evening. Todd Harper, sorry, a little short. Um, one eleven sixteen street. I have a house with a paver driveway. Um, I have walked every road between twelfth and Morgan, just to see the assessment of what's been done, what has not been done. Um, the properties that were previously done, the pavers were replaced and again, it is a nice look and it is what the owners of the property intended to have done. Um, as an owner, I have pavers and those pavers are about the current curve. I would prefer to have my pavers about the current curve. If aprons are required, then the element of a consistent look or consistent depth on the individual street is important to me for the aesthetics of the neighborhood itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, sir, please come up.
Keep going, thank you. Mike Lonicky in one ten nineteen street. I'm towards the end of the block and uh, for, I've been there for over twenty years. Constant flooding. The, the way the, the gutters are pitched right now, they're pitched into the property, not so much going down the street. And we tend to have more flooding coming down Bay Shore and going uphill than versus downhill. And my pavers have been there for, since nineteen eighty-four, so I have a concern with, they're not replaceable. They, I'm actually sitting below the curb right now because of all the runoff coming off the street into my property. And I just have a concern that I can't replace them. And I know that they're not brittle, but I just, I wanna keep my pavers. But it seems to be that right now, the, the way the current grade is on the curb is not so much designed to go down the street into the storm sewers. It's more designed to push the water into your street, into your property. Because there is no curvature on nineteenth street. It's just flat and it's just levels coming right into property. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Karen Harper, one eleven sixteenth. I just have one thing to add to what Todd said. Um, when we walked twelfth and thirteenth, and I understand that that was a different contractor. However, when we walked that and we looked at, we were trying to get an idea of aprons and the different sizes. We did notice that there is already aggregate showing and there are cracks in some of them. And obviously, like, we have a paver driveway that does not add to the. Look that we are trying to achieve with the paver driveway, so I would just like for you to, if you decide to go with aprons, to address the issue of who's going to. Up, do the upkeep on these and keep them looking like we would want it to look. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Steve Zebro five, one eighteen, fourteenth street. Um, unfortunately, I have two paver driveways in front of my house. Um, and one of them, one of the curbs has already been uh replaced by the contractor. And it went from a gentle slope to a very deep V, so. We have a driveway that's above grade. It comes down instead of that gentle slope, we have a deep V. So one of the driveways is done. And I guess because of the inspector showed up, that the contractor pulled out, so. I don't know what the situation is with the other driver, with the other um curbs that have already been poured. On the south side of fourteenth street. Equally concerned about the flooding since one of the drains, one of the two drains on the street is in front of the house as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other citizens like to speak? All right, seeing as we have no more, citizen comments are now closed. Uh, so we have in front of us a consideration of B twenty three dash zero one drainage and street improvement project change order number one. And driveway adjustment options. Um, would someone like to make a motion? Uh, to approve. B twenty three dash zero one and make a recommendation on. Uh, no standard, a two foot standard, five foot uh standard setback. Yes, sir. Uh, this is not a discuss, I mean, you can discuss all you want. I was just entertaining a motion. Okay, so we could have a debate.
Perfect. Um, based on the conversation that we've had. Um, I don't really think making a specific measurement makes sense, based on the fact that there's gonna be. Various elevations that need to be taken into account. So I'd like to make a motion that. We go ahead and put aprons in as needed. With respect to the width that's required in order to get the proper slope on the existing driveway. And tying into the gutter. I don't think we need to have a specific number to go by. Again, you can walk around the city, twel-, I mean, twelfth and thirteenth street is a good example and you will see. Various apron widths. You can see the new concrete versus the existing concrete, so it's pretty visible. And again, what they've, what they've done and what they've achieved is because of the new height of the edge of the gutter. Which was going to be higher than the concrete driveway. That's the reason they cut that driveway out. So that they could put in the apron and tie back into the existing gutter. It's, it's really pretty simple and it varies from home to home.
Mr. Roberts?
So that's my motion.
By any chance, could you actually make that into a motion for me, so I know what you're trying to say here?
My motion is that we proceed with the option of aprons where needed. And the width of the apron be determined by the contractor.
To maintain the proper slope.
Yes, okay, all right. So I, I believe I'm hearing a motion to proceed. But give the contractor the leeway to make adjustments as needed rather than to establish a standard.
Correct.
Okay, and are you going to address pavers at all in your motion?
I would, I would like to make a couple of statements about the pavers, if, if I could, aside from the motion.
I'm trying to get clarification on your motion.
I know there were a couple of citizens that asked that if I have an existing driveway that's concrete. Now. And we do put an apron in, I'm exactly in that same situation. I mean, I'm anticipating I'm gonna put in pavers at a later date. But to answer the question that was actually out there, will you be required to tie into the edge of the apron? My answer would be no. Because the contractor is gonna come in and remove all of that concrete driveway, including the apron. And then when they put in the new pavers from the edge of your garage out to the gutter. That's gonna be a consistent slope from point A to point B. Tying into the gutter. The reason again that they need the apron is because the difference in elevation of the new gutter edge. And the old driveway. So, so you asked the question, Mr. Mayor, about how, how can we include that motion to include pavers? I believe at this point, if, if the elevation requires it, we're going to need an appropriately sized apron. In order to get rid of the opportunity for the edge of the new gutter to be higher than the paper. Now, if a citizen wants it to be that way, I think we should have that option available to them. As, as one of the citizens mentioned earlier. He's okay with the edge of the gutter being higher than his paper?
Okay, I'm gonna ask you one more time. Can you give me a good motion or do I need to go to the city attorney for some help on this?
Well. To the extent, remember Roberts is, remember Roberts has articulated a full motion. Um, Mayor, you've asked him to expand the scope of it. Um, you could treat those in, in separate issues and they are obviously related. Um, but if you wish to, to avoid some of the complication of having a motion that addresses of every eventuality, you can have one that addresses. Um, just the breadth of the change order to begin with, and then if, if, if the manager or contractor require um, direction from this body relative to pavers. Um, then, you know, you, you can make a motion to that agreement, rep, and approach it as a, you know, eating the elephant one bite at a time.
Okay, so what the, the first uh, the first issue or um. The first problem we have is that we need to make these driveways, the, the aprons consistent where we have no pavers. Would you agree with that, Mr. Reefer?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so is it? Is it feasible to establish a standard for non-paver driveways?
I think the engineer has worked out the standard of the two feet. And he's confident that that's gonna work on all paved, paved driveways.
Okay, so maybe we do this in two motions. Let's start with a motion that's concerning only non-paver driveways. And that will simplify some things. So uh, Mr. Banker, do you have a comment?
For clarity, uh, the engineer noted that. Pulling out the pavers and providing a slope like an apron. Could work if the contractor was in agreement. Is that correct, Mr. Flutie?
Mr. Flutie, please come back.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm not dismissing your motion. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you your emotion, but I wanna make sure that we. Understand exactly what you're making a motion on and we handle it, we address it properly.
Perfect.
Mr. Flutie, uh, you had a question from Mr. Banker.
The question was, um, if we pull out two feet of pavers, four feet of pavers, five feet of pavers. And put an apron in there we have to dig out. My question to you then was, why can't we dig out, put the modify in? And bring the pavers back, put the pavers back to the. That slope, that the same slope that the apron was going to achieve. And you said, well, that's possible if the contractor is willing to do it.
It is possible. And yeah, the, the, uh, on the details of doing it, I'm just trying to grasp. But you know, the, the apron, you know, the two foot wide ties into the top of curb and ties into the driveway. If we. I want to make that pavers. And tie it in at the same elevations, then yes, that can, that can be done.
Yeah, because I got a picture of. What that, the, the street I was explaining, one had, one has pavers that was pulled out. Resloped and the other one had an apron. So I, I can make a motion right now if you wanna pull your motion.
Um, well, I'd like to make a comment first or, or get a question clarified. If we do that. We're gonna have, if I understand it correctly, we're gonna have two different. Slopes of pavers. I for one, if I had pavers in, in my driveway, would not want that because you're tying in at the elevation of the new curb. So you're gonna have a sharper slope at the beginning and then it's gonna level off. And go back to your, to your garage if you do that. That's, that's in effect what the apron is providing. The, the, because the concrete, you can make that anything you want to with the thickness. So the paper, the papers, I'm gonna exaggerate it, but the papers, Mr. Banker, are gonna go like this. And then like that.
Hmm, yeah, but you're only, you're only, you're only going two to, two, four feet. So you're gonna slope, the, the pavers are anywhere from. Twelve inches to four inches.
Right.
Okay, so you can slope. There's twelve, you can, you can slope a twelve inch paver in two feet and it won't even, you, you won't even see. The variation that you're talking about. If you have concrete, you're gonna have a hard slope. I, I think. I think you can slope any. Paver that short a distance without having any visual effects.
Obviously, pavers are, are where we're, we're having some dilemma, so let's get the concrete driveways out of the way. Would you like to make a motion on the concrete driveways and set a standard for? Only for concrete driveways?
Do you feel it's, it's in our best interest to have a standard, like the two foot measurement?
I think the two foot, yes, I, I think so. And, and.
My motion would be that we proceed with any and all homes that have concrete driveways. To, if needed, install a two foot apron from the edge of the gutter. To the remaining portion. Of the driveway.
Would anyone like to make a second on that motion? Yes, uh, Councilmember Shaw Elliott. Um. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No.
Okay, well, that's three to one. At least we have a standard on the. Uh, on the concrete. Are you satisfied with that, Mr. Reefer?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now we're moving on to the um. To the pavers. Mr. Banker, do you have some very strong ideas about uh, the pavering? Uh, would you like to make a motion?
I, I make a motion that the resident has the authority to approve. An apron or restore the pavers into a proper slope that the apron would provide.
Okay, rephrase that one more time.
My motion is that the. Uh, I'm sorry. My motion is that the resident has the authority to approve an apron or restore the pavers. Into a proper slope as an apron would provide. So if you have a two foot slope. Or two foot apron, I mean, and you have a, a runoff of maybe one to twelve. All right, you'll have a runoff of one to twelve with the pavers.
At any cost.
At any cost.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table uh, to. Approve uh, or to give residents approval uh, to decide whether they would like an apron. Or they would like their pavers restored in uh. Uh. Basically, instead of a, a standard apron. Could I, could I rephrase that? At any cost.
At, at, any cost.
At any cost. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Is it possible to ask one question to the contractor before we do that or is?
Well, right now there's a motion on the table, so um. You can let it die and then ask the question. All right, there's no seconds, so the motion dies. Now you can ask your question.
If I could ask the contractor. Um. So if, if we do that.
Sir.
And you've done this a lot more than I have, so how would you visualize? The pavers being removed?
Well, the whole issue we brought.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm too loud. Um, the whole issue with the.
We, we like loud.
Yeah, what we, the reason when Larry redid the redesign. As you know, at all the driveways, the curb's gonna be a little higher at every single driveway. What we were doing before, we were tying into the driveways to limit the access or to limit the impact on the aprons. So now every driveway when we come to is gonna be, could be a quarter inch, could be an inch, you know, it's gonna be higher. We need to go back on the apron and go back and fix a certain section.
We need to go back on the apron and go back and fix a certain section.
Right.
We agreed, we didn't agree, I, we proposed that we go back evenly on everyone's driveway, no matter if it was concrete, pavers, everything. I proposed it because every other municipality I've ever done work in, the contractor is not responsible for paver driveways. The homeowner is responsible. The city will only put back the apron and concrete. If the homeowner wants to put it back in bricks, they're welcome to go put it back in bricks. So I just proposed, and while we'll do whatever the homeowners want, whatever you guys say, I'll do whatever you want. I'm, I'm not, you know, it doesn't matter to me. Um, but I proposed just to do like a uniform down the street, so when you're looking, everyone's uniform, two foot, you know, it looks nice and clean. You know, it's two foot down, all the way down, whether it's concrete or pavers. Obviously, some homeowners, you know, like their pavers, rightfully so, you know, I would want my pavers too. But the issue is, is like you were saying, we're just matching the existing. So in that two foot, the slope could be like this, the slope could be straight, the slope can be consistent all the way. So I'm, I'm worried about when, one, when we remove the pavers, that they're gonna be damaged and broken, and we can't fix them. Two, when we put them back, you're creating a slope, right? So if you're going uphill, you need more pavers. There'll be like a half an inch to an inch gap right at the, right at the apron. So what, and then what if we can't get any more pavers? You're gonna, so do I leave the gap there? You know, then we're, then we fall into that issue. I was just proposing the concrete just to, so we don't have any issues going down the line. But we'll do, there's a pay item for both. You guys have a pay item for removing and replacing pavers, and you have a pay item for removing it as concrete. It's just, we were trying to limit the impact to the homeowners. And plus, if we do it in concrete, we can pour it all at one time. I could pour the curb at one time, I could pour the concrete apron at one time. If there's pavers, we got our paper subcontractor is not gonna come and do one driveway. He's gonna wanna do, you know, five or six at a time. So it's gonna limit the homeowners access into the house, which we didn't, we didn't want that to happen.
Right.
Um, but like I said, we'll do whatever everybody wants. It's just, we don't want, when we put the two-foot pavers back, you have an elevation change, and then really you have to go back to the, to the drive, you know, to the, to the garage door.
Right.
Which that's gonna cost a fortune to do, you know, if you guys wanna do it that way.
And, and I, I, uh, agree with you on what other communities do, which is if you build something in the right of way, and let's say a water main breaks,
Yep.
and they dig up everything, they put dirt on it, and they call it a day, and it's all on you to put it back the way.
Exactly. If it's pavers, if it's concrete, you know, they'll restore it in concrete. But usually, pavers no one touches, because then it's the, oh, the contractor broke the pavers while they were being picked up, and then we get blamed for breaking the pavers. Then we can't find the pavers that match. And then we're into a whole nother, you know, we're back here again for another council meeting, because I broke pavers that can't match, and you know, you guys are all getting mad at me, 'cause, you know, just trying to limit that, that was all. I thought that the concrete apron uniformly down the road would help that. That's, that's all.
Yes.
Consistent with that idea of having some uniformity.
Yeah.
I would also be concerned about any process that allows homeowner discretion. Because how do you administer that? How do you, how do you ask for a decision? What happens when someone doesn't make the decision, and that, and you're there, and you're ready to pour concrete, and somebody's a holdout? Do they hold up the whole street? So I think that's a problem.
Well, it's a, it's a good point you've brought up, and one of the issues that we actually have right now is code. Uh, so we've allowed everyone to do whatever they wanted to, for the most part. So however you wanna meet the curb, and Mr. Reefer, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's what we've done in the past. Um, but if we established a standard, well, we would also need code to back that up, because as soon as these gentlemen did their job, we'd have people out there digging up the concrete and changing it to the way that they really wanted it to be. Uh, so i- it's a, it's a difficult situation for us, because this is, it's always in the past, has been whatever the homeowner wants, and now we're trying to solve a flooding issue. And, um, it seems like no one's happy. Uh, so, um, I can, I, I'm happy that we've at least addressed the, uh, concrete, but I, I'm sort of at an impasse right now on the paper situation, uh, because because you're right.
Yeah, I just wanna present all the facts to you guys and just lay it all out, you know? I don't want anybody, you know, any homeowner to be, you know, upset or anything that's going on, and we don't wanna limit, you know, we need to get, we need, just like the redesign with the curb, we have directive on the curb now, and it, there won't be an issue. It'll, everything will be fine. Just, we need a solid directive on these things, so that, you know, as we move along, you're, there's no downtime involved, you know, just sitting there twiddling our thumbs on what to do with someone's apron.
So the impacts of allowing, let's just say that, okay, everyone gets a two-foot curb, and then, um, I'm sorry, a two-foot apron, and then, uh, six months from now, uh, the gentleman that said he was considering pavers,
Mm-hmm.
he comes in,
Yep.
and his crew tears it out. Well, what's gonna happen with all that storm drainage?
So, the apron issue doesn't impact the storm drainage problem at all. This, what Larry did was redesign it where the curb now has a consistent shape throughout the whole thing. So there'll be a gutter, nothing will be, come to like a flat point or anything like that. So the, the, this apron issue, it has nothing to do with erosion, it has nothing to do, it's just aesthetics. That's it. This is all, this is about is aesthetics. It has nothing to do with the curb, has not, I mean, it's just now because we're gonna be a half an inch, three quarters, a quarter inch, we have to go back a certain distance on some people's aprons to fix them. But it's not a, it's not a, it's not a stormwater issue. This is strictly an appearance issue.
Okay. Mr. Roberts?
So if we did, as one of the citizens suggested, if we did go ahead and not, not put in the apron,
Mm-hmm.
and the edge of the new gutter, let's just say a half inch, worst case scenario,
Yeah.
is a half inch above that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not a materials engineer, but so the, the, the vehicle is driving over that.
It'll just be like a little bump, that's all.
Do you think it would actually break the concrete, which is something we could do?
Yeah, that edge could crack. I would not recommend doing that at all. Because I have to still remove a strip of the pavers
Correct.
to, to put our form board in.
Right.
So either way, we're still removing the, I guess it's the soldier course is what they call it, the one that borders the outside that, you know, keeps it all in. We still have to remove that no matter what. We're resetting those no matter what. It's, the fact is, when, now that it's, we're not needing the existing driveways anymore, we have a design which shows that we have to be higher.
Yeah.
So at what, you know, we have to go farther back in the people's driveways now.
And there's no flexibility on that half inch one way or the other.
Oh, because this is based on, you can't change that. His design is what it is. It's, you're gonna, now you're changing his water problem. Yeah.
No, I'm talking about where the, the lip of the apron meets the pavers.
Um, no, I don't, I don't think you want, 'cause you want, 'cause right now, the design is, is gonna be a consistent curve throughout the whole street. And then if you start dropping backboards and things like that, you're gonna change his design, and then now we gotta go back, you're, you're just opening up a whole new, you know, can of worms.
So ultimately, if we did that, it falls back on the homeowner. If they wanna make a correction, they need to lift up their pavers and raise them or lower them. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, yeah. And like I said, there, there is a pay item in this, in our project for removing pavers and removing concrete. There, it is as needed. There is an as-needed, uh, pay item. So it's, uh, it's not like I'm going back and gonna be, oh, now the paver driveways are X amount. It's not. It's a per square footage price already set in the bit.
Two feet. Council?
I just can't understand how the city did eight blocks and some more with pavers, uh, putting them back, and some were cracked or whatever. We found them, or the contractor found them, and now all of a sudden, we can't do it.
Well, can I make a comment to that?
Go ahead.
Uh, when we were on, I don't know, see, one of these streets right here, uh, one of the homeowners had a paver apron driveway. Um, called us, called the city, uh, said that we had broken their paver apron driveway, that our vehicles had driven on them when we were moving the curb, that we had broken them. Before the project had started, we had the entire right-of-way videoed and narrated by someone that walked, that walked the curb line, walked the aprons, came up to this homeowner's driveway, looked down, pointed at it, said, all the curb, all the, there's a bunch of broken pavers in here, um, you know, just to note it on the video and moved on. We sent that information to the homeowner, still not happy. Still says I broke the pavers, still says we drove on the driveway. It doesn't matter what, it, it all gets blamed on me no matter what. E- even if I, I have video proof that we, the pavers were broken before, it, it doesn't matter. So I'm, we're trying to limit, we're, we're getting ahead of it to discuss now,
Right.
that, you know, we all have to be, you know, work together on it, you know what I mean? But that's, and then that's where we came to the redesign on putting two foot back on the concrete aprons and stuff like that.
Problem I have. I live in Baller Beach, and you go around, and everyone has like this different driveways. This is a unique community. This isn't Largo.
Yeah, I understand.
This isn't a homeowners association, okay, where everything has to be one color and all like that. This is a unique town that we pay a lot of money to live in, and now you wanna make, so as you said, I want be able to look down the street and it's all consistent.
Because it seemed to me. Because, uh, Larry's.
Where do you live?
I live in Safety Harbor.
Okay.
Florida.
That's a lot of, a lot of it's consistent there.
Yeah, yeah. So in, in Safety Harbor, um, the apron has to be poured in concrete, and there has to be an expansion joint all the way around the apron. So if the city has to come in and demo the apron, they don't have to do any saw cutting, they don't have to do anything. They take their, their machine, they pick up the concrete, and it's gone. They can fix the water line, they can fix the issue. It's to help with public works and make the lives on the city easier for repairs. They don't, you, most cities go that route, because they wanna make, they don't want their public works out there removing pavers if it's underneath, you know, when the water main breaks, or the sewer line breaks, or it just, it makes it easier on them. They can get in, they can fix it, and then the restoration, you know, is put on somebody else, which is just pouring back in concrete. And I, I just, when that issue came up with the homeowner, and we were talking about the redesign, and we discussed this with Kyle and Larry, I just brought this to the attention. It's not set in stone, you know, we could, you tell me what we're gonna do, and we'll do it. That's all.
Well, um, Mr. Banker, you're, uh, uh, you made a motion earlier. Uh, you're welcome to make another one, and, um, and we'll see where the council.
Well, my, my first motion didn't get a, uh, second, so why make?
You're more than welcome to.
I'll make another motion. A motion that the residents have the authority to approve an apron or restore the pavers into a proper slope as an apron would provide.
Would anyone like to make a second on that one? I'm sorry, the motion dies. All right, so, uh, would anyone else like to make another motion?
I, I'd like to know what our experts' recommendation would be for, uh, paver driveways. What would you like to see done? Or what would you not like, what, not what you'd like, what do you recommend in your expert opinion as most appropriate for this community?
As you listen here, I mean, our recommendation would be for the two-foot wide, uh, apron. And that would take the, uh, be able to handle each of the streets. Uh, that will allow the city, if it should a, uh, time come that it has to be dug up or a water lane, uh, water line breakage, it just makes the public work side work smoother for any kind of, uh, digging and restoration and repair. So that's what we would recommend, would be an apron like that.
I'd like to give it a shot.
Okay.
Similar to the first motion, I would like for all of the homes that currently have pavers to allow a two-foot apron to be installed from the edge of the gutter after removing the required pavers to be that apron to be poured in that, in that space. If a homeowner chooses to not have that apron, they have that right. I personally don't think it's a great idea because of what we discussed, and when we were talking about uniformity, again, I'm one hundred percent confident that even if that two-foot apron is put on my concrete driveway, which is a great idea to tie into the gutter, when I do choose to put pavers in, my paper company is gonna remove all of that concrete up to the edge of the gutter. And then he's gonna put the proper fill material in and have a consistent slope from the edge of the gutter to my garage, so it won't have the two-foot paper, won't have the two-foot apron at my house.
Okay, so I think your motion is homes with pavers still get the two-foot apron. The homeowner has the option to remove the pavers before construction begins. And then, what? What was the rest of it?
Well, the paper's gonna be removed by the contractor.
Okay.
And the contractor is gonna put in the two-foot apron. But the only addition I had to that was, if there is a homeowner that decides, I don't want that, I just want my pavers to remain where they are up to the edge of the gutter. So in that scenario, the contractor would still remove them, but the contractor is gonna put them right back where they were after his gutter is poured. And there's probably gonna be a lip there.
So you, uh, I think what you're saying is, your motion says either you give the homeowner the option to accept the two-foot apron,
Mm-hmm.
uh, and they do a best-case scenario of removing and, and putting the pavers back where they join up to the apron?
Correct.
Or the option B is, don't do anything with my pavers. Stay out of my yard.
But it'll still have to be removed when they put in the gutter.
Okay.
Right. And then they're just gonna be replaced. It's as if they weren't touched.
If they weren't, if they, okay. So accept a two-foot apron, or I don't want a two-foot apron.
Correct.
In either case, uh, take, remove the pavers and put them back.
Yes, sir.
Everyone get that?
Not really.
Okay, so the motion on the table right now is to allow the homeowner to pick whether he gets a two-foot apron. Uh, if he has pavers, he's given the option of accepting the two-foot apron with pavers removed uh, to make room for, for the apron, and then they're placed, they're returned back neatly as originally proposed by the contractor. Uh, or, or the homeowner has the second option of don't accept the apron and raise my pavers and put them back as best you can. Best you can, as best you can.
Or put them back, just put them back.
Put them back.
Just like we've done.
So you, then you're, you, you could be citing a tripping hazard? So, so delivery guy goes in, makes it, Amazon pulls up to your house, he walks out and hits the curb and falls down, and who gets sued?
It's just a motion on the table. At this moment. So do I have a second on this motion? No. I'm sorry, the motion dies. Mr. Reefer, what would you like to see, sir?
See, there are some driveways that are very, very close to the existing, like the existing driveway is gonna be very, very close to where the curb ends up, and it's gonna be like very minimal. And on those driveways that happen to be pavers, I think it's totally feasible that we could pull up the pavers and
Just put them back.
put them back and make it work. Um, there's gonna be other driveways that it's gonna be a bigger difference, and you know, but concrete gives you a little more versatility to pour in there, um, but trying to reset pavers without going back an extreme distance, it may not always look great, so, um, I think in that case, it's, it's the best option to use an apron. Um, if the homeowner wants to do something different, then we could just leave it up to them, but they would be incurring the costs as, as far as they want to go if they don't wanna use an apron.
Okay, so what, what I'm hearing is, um, accept the two-foot apron and we'll pay for it, uh, or don't, and, uh, it's all on you. Is that basically what you said?
We'll, we'll provide a solution, but. We'll, we'll provide a solution, but, um, if it's a matter of going, you know, ten feet back into the, to the right away, you know, we, you know, we have to, we do have to set some kind of standard because i- you know, most driveways are one grade. And we'll try, I want to try to, to put the papers back to make the residents happy when, when we can, but we also have to be realistic of where it's going to end up.
For the record, what is a five foot apron cost?
Uh, it's, if we have an.
I know, I'm just putting square footage.
I mean, what average, what would you say a five foot apron on an average size width driveway?
On, on average.
In, in concrete, how, how much would that cost? If you had to run the quick numbers.
Well, you gave us numbers for both the paper option.
That's where all this.
This is all impacted.
Yeah.
And the concrete option.
Do you have a cost for a five foot apron?
Well, on the five foot, if we put the, say it's five foot impact, concrete will be eighty four thousand or papers would be a hundred and sixty nine thousand.
Yeah, but you're talking total project. I'm talking.
That's total project.
I'm talking about per home.
Uh. I can't believe, but papers is twenty dollars a square foot and concrete's ten.
Okay, so about a thousand dollars maybe.
So why don't we give that, why don't we give the homeowner the option of the ten dollars at five s- square feet? Whatever that comes out to, we'll figure it out real quick. But, um, if he wants to put his papers back, he absorbs the other cost, which should be minimal since we're going for five feet.
Yeah, ten dollars, that would be the concrete for us, yeah.
And twenty dollars for the papers.
Yes.
So I'm saying, give the homeowner the option saying, we're going to give you five foot of concrete at no cost. If you want to put the papers back, then we're going to give you, we're going to offset, we're going to give you whatever that cost is off the papers.
That difference, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think I'm hearing three different things here. One is uniform, everybody gets a two foot apron. Two.
That was already passed.
That was already passed for the concrete.
Yeah.
And that can, that can always be amended, uh, but with a motion.
So what was the second two?
Two is people decide on their own, um, subject to some standard. And three, which is where I thought we started and what I thought you just said was that the contractor would have discretion, do the best you can as you're going down the road, but that some are going to be very narrow aprons and others will be wider. Is that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, something, something similar to that. Originally, uh, whenever I had a discussion with, uh, Mr. Riefler, um, that I, I thought the intention was to establish a standard and then give the homeowner the option to either accept the standard or accept the cost to make their driveway as they wish.
How would that be administered?
Well, it would be administered by, we're here to work on your driveway. Do you want this apron or not?
I'm going to change what you just said into a motion.
Okay.
With the five foot cost of concrete to be offset.
Why that?
I, I understand, I understand where he's going with this. Uh, so I think the motion would be, um, establish a standard of five foot setbacks. Um, if you choose not to accept the setback in your driveway, then you are, um, awarded the offset cost to repair your pavers as you wish.
Very good. Yeah, very good. Um, that's, that's my motion.
And I don't know what that, what that cost would be, but, um, I, do we even have a method in place to, to administer something like this?
Yeah, I mean, Larry, Larry can calculate what that would cost and if, uh, they choose to reset their papers however they want, we could provide, I guess.
And a five foot standard, uh, for all concrete driveways would certainly alleviate a lot of the steep inclines and issues that we would encounter otherwise, correct?
Right.
That would also prevent a lot of people from having to throw those big rubber things out at the end of their driveway. Um, just so that they can get their car out without bottoming out, correct?
Yeah, so it helps.
Okay, so.
Isn't, isn't five foot standard giving them the
That's a max.
The maximum credit as opposed to what the cost of their particular driveway might be?
Just with the papers.
Yeah, for those with papers.
I, I would think that there would need to be, now we've, you've not actually made the motion yet, so, uh, we're still talking about it, okay? But I would think that, uh, what would need to happen is that if there's a value that's established for a five foot apron that you could turn in receipts for a maximum of the amount of the five feet of concrete.
Yeah, you're going.
To offset the repairs, uh, to, to put your papers back, but in no way would I, and I see where you're going with this. In no way would I be willing to just flat rate, give everyone with pavers that a, a, a flat amount without actually having something to back up. So it would be like you turn in a receipt and you get a reimbursement for your hardship of having to put your papers back in place.
And this is done when?
Uh, after the fact.
So we come through and build what? And then they ask, they do their own modification later and get a.
I, what I'm seeing right now is that each homeowner with papers would be, um, would be asked, do you want the five foot set or the fi- five foot apron, yes or no? And if they say no, then thank you very much. And, uh, here's a form. If you decide to have your driveway modified to accommodate, um, not getting an apron to match up with the new guttering, uh, fill out this form, provide receipts and we will compensate you for your trouble.
If we do that, I think that we need to have a process for how that, how they are given notice, how that is sent out in advance with a specific deadline or response.
I think that that's probably, um, that, I see where you're going with that also is that, okay, a year later I decide that I want to replace these old crappy pavers that are broken and, uh, you know, so yeah, there would probably need to be, uh, say a thirty day.
It'd have to be done during this project.
Yeah, because we're starting, we're, we're restarting in a week, two weeks or whatever, so we need to have some sort of process that, okay, if you don't respond by this day, and then we're going to do what? What's the default?
Do the, the concrete.
Okay.
Okay, so make sure I've got this right. Hey, we have a motion on the table or we're about to. Mr. Bankard, please make your motion.
Uh, exactly how you wanted it.
Okay, I, I need you to say it though.
Oh, you want me to?
Just go ahead and, and say it.
I make a motion that we give the resident the option, if he has papers up to the five foot setback of a, with, with a concrete apron would cost. He would receive that compensation to put his papers back.
Okay. At his cost.
At his cost.
Or, uh, but it cannot exceed the cost of the
Five foot.
Five foot, uh, apron.
And if you need a timeline too now, within the next ten days or five days, seven days.
You're not going to get anyone to repair their papers on a.
No, I'm talking about saying.
I, I don't think the motion needs to lay out all of the administrative protocols that will go into place to actuate this process. I think your, your contractor, your engineer and your city manager are looking for policy direction. You folks are policymakers, so give them your policy direction with whatever fiscal impact it may have. And your manager can implement it. And if there are additional delays to start times or anything else as a result of implementing this, that's and a, a cost of assuming business that we're doing here, but I agree with you. From an operational standpoint, your staff, your team that you've either contracted with or hired, uh, will work to ensure that it is implemented in the most prudent manner practical under the circumstances. But you guys don't need to lay out, you know, forty eight hours, seventy two hours, that we're going to lose the plot that way.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to, uh, give residents, uh, homeowners with pavers in their driveway, the option to accept a five foot, uh, apron in their driveway or reject that and, um, and they're, uh, they basically are, uh, taking it upon themselves to get uh, repairs done to match the new guttering and curb, uh, at a cost not to exceed, uh, the equivalent, which we have not established what that is yet of a five foot, uh, apron. Uh, do I have a second?
No.
Okay. Well, I don't know what to do here.
Okay.
The motion dies.
We, we try.
Yeah. All right, uh, well, I've got two people here that keep saying no, do you have an option for me? Would, would anyone like to make a motion so that we can end this meeting? Give these people some direction.
I would ask, how is this typically done? I mean, normally you don't have a lot of input as far as what happens with a city project. So how is this typically handled?
If this was Largo, Florida, they would, it would just happen.
Yep.
They would not get notice. If their, their street or their driveway would be, uh, wrecked. Uh, they would come in and do whatever they wanted to and then whatever was beyond the apron, the curb or whatever.
Well, if it's Madeira.
Would be on the homeowner to repair.
Madeira Beach, Indian Rocks Beach, any, any comparable community is ours.
There's. Stay, uh, of course, give notice of construction's going to happen, but there isn't any notice of, of something like, you know, on pavers or concrete. It, they come in as everything in, within the right of way is either taken out and then replaced according to the design drawings.
And you can't compare other cities to Bel Air Beach.
Real quick. So the city manager had, had made a comment earlier that, that he felt in working with the engineer that there were probably just a few homes that had anything of significance over like a quarter of an inch. Elevation differential between the top edge of the gutter and the existing drive, the existing paver height. Is, is that, are you comfortable with that?
No, there's some that are, that are over a half inch and there's some that are barely a quarter inch. It's, it's just varies because he designed the curb without taking into, into, uh, you know, consideration every single driveway and that's what we were running into the problem by trying to match driveways.
Will we be able to, on an individual basis, like if, if you're talking to the homeowner and we're giving them whatever option we decide on? Can we tell them, will the elevation differential between the top edge of the gutter and the top of your paver will be a sixteenth of an inch or a half of an inch? Will we, we be able to tell them that at that time?
Yes, well, that information would be on the plans.
Okay.
And the survey, so we can tell them how much of a difference there will be.
Right.
Yes.
I, I, I don't think that that would be you, I think that that would be our staff.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, that information would be published somewhere and everyone should be able to just look online and see what the impact was. Um, okay, so we still have the issue with the papers. Uh, Mr. Roberts, now would you like to make a motion?
Well, I made a motion earlier, which was we go with the two foot apron, even for the, the homes that have pavers. And if for, if for some reason that didn't work for a particular homeowner or they chose not to want to do that option, then that, that's where we don't really have a perfect answer at this point.
Okay.
What options do we want to make available to the homeowner?
Uh, now, yeah, I, I'm hearing your motion and before I confirm what you just told me, I did also hear that a five foot apron is much easier to work with, both for the homeowner or the car driver and also for the, uh, just to make everything match up. So are you at all entertaining?
Yeah, I'm fine with the five foot. I just think the, the owners of, the homeowners with the pavers are going to want to have, I would think probably a a shorter distance, only because now we're given, we're taking away five feet of their papers as opposed to two feet. So it, it doesn't really matter to me, I'm just trying to put myself in their shoes that now you've just removed five feet of my papers that I've already paid for some, some time ago. And now when that job is done, you've just stacked up a bunch of papers in my garage.
Right, and, and that's where, where the option was, okay, if you don't accept this, whatever, two feet, five feet, well then, it's back on you to make it the way that you want, but we will assist you by, assist you with your cost. Uh, the other option is you don't give them anything and you, you take it or leave it. I think that, um, the Bel Air Beach way is, is, uh, is probably the better way where we would assist them. Uh, because, uh, we're trying to solve a problem and we're trying to take all of you into consideration and we're trying to make sure that, uh, we know we can't make everyone happy, that's impossible. But, uh, we're trying to accommodate the best we can because we know that everyone is take, they take pride in their homes. That's the, one of the things that makes Bel Air Beach so awesome is everyone loves our community. We take pride in our homes, we take pride in our yard, that's why we don't allow cars to park in the street, why we don't, you know, we, we, we have standards. And so what we're trying to do is establish yet another standard. Um, and, but this is a standard, hopefully with options, which is, okay, if you don't accept the standard, then it's going to come back to you and you have to figure out how to make it right. Well, we're willing to, to help you pay for it, uh, for some of it, uh, but that, that we can't just not do this job because you've got papers in your yard. And, and, and I think that's, that's what I'm hearing, so.
I thought I heard also though, that two, a two foot apron would work. Was that a fair statement? If we went with a two foot apron, that that would be able to accommodate all scenarios, including the papers?
The two foot apron would work and, uh, like I mentioned before, there's a couple scenarios where it'd be a little bit longer, the, the five foot, but that's only in a couple, couple cases.
Okay.
That's what I was going to raise is that if that's the case, then why would we reimburse people at the five foot level?
Well, of course, that's, that's, um, that was the next point was that whatever it is the standard is, that would be the maximum compensation. Uh, so if, if someone would like to make a motion on the two foot, I would be more than willing to go that route. Since we've already established two feet on the concrete driveway, that would make things, uh, pretty straightforward that, okay, here's what your options are, you can accept the two foot apron or you can reject it. And we will give you, uh, we will compensate you up to the amount that it costs to do that apron.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reopen citizens' comments. They've heard a, they've heard a bunch of recommendations, some pass, some fail. See what you guys like, because none of.
You, you, we don't do that. It's, it's because there's already, uh, we're already in the debate phase. We've, we know where every, how everyone feels.
Well, we don't live on these streets.
And that's correct.
And I figure they're here, let's hear what they have to say. What, what would you like to do?
Uh, well, I, uh,
we, it, it, it's, it's under Robert's rules, you can reopen it.
Yeah, I know, I know, and we don't, do we currently have a motion on the table?
No, ma'am, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Um, I'm going to limit comments to one and a half minutes. Would anyone like to make a, a comment? Citizens? No, yes. Todd, please come up.
Todd Harper, one eleven Sixteenth Street. I have a driveway with papers and I tend to lean toward the idea of it's my decision to apron or not. And with the idea of if there is a concrete credit to be put for the placement of the papers, so be it. What I would prefer is that the contractor does the job from beginning to end versus getting into an individual cycle, individual reimbursement and individual permits. So the idea that it's all done, give me a piece of paper to sign and whatever the difference is, let me know and I can make a rational decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Anyone else? All right, we have two, you first, sir. Uh, you're there, go ahead.
Hi, uh Dwayne, one oh four sixteen Street. And uh first I want to thank you for having a common sense approach with the pavers. Because we're really talking a sixteenth inch to a half inch higher. Which isn't gonna change the gap or the distance in the entire span of the pavers. It's just not. Um and so that common sense approach of putting back pavers just makes sense. Um there's no need, the only need for a two-foot apron at all. Is to reduce liability of the guys breaking the pavers when they're pulling them out. That's really well it's for. Okay, the actual putting back pavers, when you're only dealing with a sixteenth of an inch to maximum of a half inch higher. That's not gonna change the distance. They're not gonna need more pavers to get to the apron. So that's just a a null argument. Um so that's all, but so thanks for that common sense approach that we are got away from. We were right there and then it got away from it, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh yes, sir.
Jerry Hawkins, Jerry Hawkins, one oh uh two, one oh seven nineteen Street again. Um. When I looked at the other streets, they were all put back fine. They were all put back fine. I go on on mine, I have a concrete curb. And oh, since I have that curb there, why can't you just lift out your existing curb? And not disturb any of mine. I don't think, and you you guys are talking about a half inch difference and uh that's nothing. Uh you know, for uh some of the driveways, I think, are almost an inch. Uh that they drive up from their curbing to their driveway. So those half inches that you're talking about is is nothing. Yeah. Yeah, it is 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 the reason you wanna dig back in the pavers is because the contractor cannot pull out. Existing curves. Is that why you're disturbing the existing papers?
Whenever we go back to a debate, uh maybe we'll bring that up.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, citizen comments are now closed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, do we have a motion?
I want to bring back my old motion.
Which one?
Yeah, there's been like seven, so.
The one about reimbursing.
Okay. Are you fine? Are you fine with the two-foot apron? And and reimbursing based on that because I wouldn't, I will not vote for five feet if we're setting a standard of two feet.
I I'm fine with that.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to um. Allow residents with pavers, uh give them the option to either accept the two-foot apron. Uh we will remove pavers and place them back appropriately. Um or um you reject the two-foot apron. And uh the the money saved by not doing an apron at that address. Uh can be applied for uh by the homeowner to for reimbursement for doing their own thing.
Thank you.
Do I have a second on that? Okay. Well, um I I would uh I would entertain anyone to make a motion that they're happy with.
Okay, I would last like to ask a question again to the contractor. So one one citizen just came up and said. They're they're fine with the lip of of the gutter. Being up to a half inch above their highest paver at that intersection, at that interjection there. So. The first question is though, is there anything from a construction standpoint that you guys could do? In front of those homes where we have pavers to eliminate effectively the lip. Some type of camphor or something where we're coming down to it, just. Just right there in front. I mean, it doesn't seem like, well, I know it wouldn't affect the stormwater flow at all.
Yeah, the only thing that possibly could be done is it it's with the backboard. You have to change the elevation of the backboard.
Okay.
With the new redesign and get, we're given set elevations now.
Right.
So then we're back to the point where the ambiguity comes in to play.
Okay.
How far back on each driveway do you drop the backboard down? Is that gonna create a no flow, no flow line in the gutter anymore? You know, we're back to the the problem where we arose before. Now that we have the redesign.
Okay, so if we don't mess with that then, so let's 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 avoid that now.
I have, oh, sorry.
Okay.
I'm gonna interrupt you, but we have to remove one set of brick pavers.
Correct.
To put our board in.
Yes.
I can't pour up again. The only pavers we didn't remove was the ones that we poured right up against it. But the current redesign now is we're higher than all the driveways, either higher or lower. So at least one row of pavers would have to be removed.
So I understand that completely. So that's that in my mind, that's not an issue.
Okay.
But I'm just talking about, so when it's done and the pavers have been put back.
Mm-hmm.
And there's effectively anywhere from a half inch to a quarter inch differential.
Hmm.
Right there.
Yeah.
In your mind, is is are there any problems that that would cause?
It it's just almost an aesthetics thing too, and then that, you don't want that radius to break.
Right.
As well. You want surfaces to be flat with each other levels. So when you drive, you drive on one surface to another, another surface.
Right.
So what's gonna happen probably is if you leave that gap there, that reveal, that little bit of reveal. It it could happen, it could not happen. It'll break off. It'll break off and there'll be like a little chip mark there and it won't be like a nice rounded edged. Edged piece.
Purpose.
Exactly.
Of the apron.
Exactly, where you wanna, you wanna have both surfaces meet at a certain elevation level, you know what I mean? So, yeah, I don't, I don't see, yeah.
How about if you diamond diamond wield and ground it down? To an even surface.
On peep for the pavers?
Oh, for their concrete.
Concrete.
Oh, yeah, um. Mostly all situations where you're where you're needing new concrete, you always, you don't grind. You just demo as far back as you need to and then tie it in like.
There's gonna be a quarter inch, half inch gap, so.
Oh, you're talking about grinding that that reveal?
Yeah.
Right, kinda like you see on sidewalks, you know, where they.
So then now you, now we're back to, what's uglier, having a two-foot apron or having your thing? Corner ground down, you know?
Told it seal on there.
What's that?
You can actually put a coated seal on your grind bar.
Yeah, after you grind it, we we could do that. I mean, that's the only thing that's um. That's not a bid item or anything discussed previously. We would have to, I don't know the cost of that. I don't know. What we have now is solid cost on the bid. Twenty dollars a square foot to remove and replace pavers. Ten dollars a square foot to remove and replace concrete aprons. So.
Thank you very much. Mr. Roberts, uh has he uh cleared things out for you? Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm back to the original motion of a of a two-foot apron. And allowing the individual property owners to not do that if they choose to. And therefore their pavers would go, once the pavers are removed, those pavers would be put right back where they were before. With the potential of an offset.
From the gut. Okay, so basically if they reject it. We just put the pavers right back where they came from and if it doesn't meet up to the. Or the way that it should be, then it just is what it is.
Yes.
Okay, and.
With the tail and ahead of time, effectively what that thickness differential is going to be.
Okay, and so there's no compensation option. It's just. Take it. Uh with a two-foot apron or you you get a best case scenario with. Would be uh replacing or putting your pavers back where where they were.
With the contractor, we put them back.
Right.
Right, right.
Okay.
I just to give you a thought, I mean, pretty quickly, if you have a twenty-foot wide driveway, five feet deep. That's a hundred square feet times ten dollars, that's a thousand dollars. So that's what we would be giving people if we opted to do that.
Okay, so you're saying don't do that or yes, do that.
Well, I'm saying I don't, I don't think it's really necessary.
Necessary.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the table is to give the the homeowner with pavers. The option to accept the two-foot apron or reject the two-foot apron and uh the. Uh contractors do a best case scenario with their existing pavers.
Correct.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Waiting you happy. Motion's about to die.
Then we can have another discussion, so.
All right, motion dies uh. Councilmember Shaw Elliott, I would like to hear your thoughts on this because uh everyone's making motions but you. And I'm not allowed to.
Well, I didn't know you weren't allowed.
I'm not allowed to.
Good to know that. Um. First of all, the proposal that drew us here was to. Provide for a two-foot concrete apron on all driveways. And they were all driveways on these particular streets. So I'll go back to a question. Why are these streets different? We've been through a third of our streets where the contractor made the decision as they went along. As to whether. An apron was needed or something else was needed. So. And I understand that. These streets probably required more apron, which was not included in the bid and that's what brought us here tonight. Is that part correct?
I can, I can address that. It's a. Basically, the contractor knows that they have to change their strategy to make this project work properly. Now, the way that we've done it in the past, I think that we've actually gotten lucky. Would you say that's the case? That we've gotten lucky and for the most part, it's worked out okay until we hit a snag with. Twenty-third and also fourteenth. Um so we realized that, okay, maybe the way that we've been doing it is not. Was not the most effective and best way of constructing these curves. So. Now, we've introduced a variable. Okay, we're not gonna do it the same way for everybody because. Um or we want to do it the same way for everybody because now we can establish. An exact cost adjustment for the project. Um whereas if we say every driveway is treated differently. We don't really have, we don't know what it's gonna cost. We might as well just open our checkbook. And say, here's the signature and you fill it in at the end of the project. So that's the whole purpose of trying to establish a standard. And by giving the homeowner the option of accepting or rejecting. Then it's still, we still maintain the same cost. Uh whereas if we um but we start. Doing what we've done in the past, even though it it we were somehow able to do it. Um that apparently that we're not able to do that anymore. Mr. Referee, am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
And then going forward, they will have the two-foot standard.
Yes, but the remaining streets of this project will have a two-foot standard. The idea of the standard is to make it look uniform. Um but with the paper driveways, if it's a very close match. I prefer not to put a apron in where we can actually make the papers work. But that's kind of luck of the draw.
Okay, so it won't be standard. The the paver driveways might go straight up to the curb.
Yes.
All right.
Said differently, Miss um Councilwoman, the. The aphorism that no plan survives contact with the enemy, or better put by Mike Tyson, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the face. Um the the challenge that you're facing is. You folks are trying to create standardized solutions while also remaining sensitive to the. On the ground, real-time possibilities of what a contractor may encounter in construction. And then try to be able to pivot in that moment as well. And I think that the delicate balance that each of the four of you are trying to work through in your motions, that's that's really where. The tension seems to be in your respective motions is how much. Um when you're left with the, a call needs to be made in the field, is it you? There seems to be a tension between the four of you between, is the contractor making that call based on the pro, the project? Or is the property owner making that call based on their own druthers, preferences, what have you? So um that's, that's where it seems to stand.
And and I will admit, I'm I'm struggling with establishing a standard. Uh at all, if there is no ordinance to back it up. Uh because if you establish a standard and then you allow the homeowners to go rip out whatever that standard is, then it's not a standard. Um so um from a construction perspective, I agree one hundred percent. That's the easiest way, the most cost-effective way is to rubber stamp the design all the way down the street. Um. And really, the only way that I can see this being acceptable or accepted by the homeowners is to give them the option. To either accept it or reject it. And if they reject it, then um then the contractor. Um assesses us with additional cost to. To move the pavers around or we do the offset where we um we reimburse the. The homeowner, the maximum amount of the uh of the apron.
Just just to note, Mr. Mayor, when I, my last motion had failed or didn't. It fails. Um and you said you wouldn't vote for the five foot, so I reduced it to two foot.
Right.
For the record, that wouldn't cost us a dime more.
That's, that's correct. As long as, as long as we, eh the the cost is the same. If if everybody's getting the two-foot apron. If they reject it, then the maximum they could apply for would be the same cost of the two-foot apron.
Same as that we were.
And and then it would be on them, not the contractor.
And that's what.
And I'm seeing a head nod from the contractor that tells me that he likes that plan also.
And you have people nodding their heads out there that are being affected it like. And I don't know why it didn't piss.
Well. I would entertain someone, yes.
This one more question for the contractor. So have the six streets effectively ever been completed? Were any of those driveways given an apron?
A concrete apron?
Yes.
No.
Okay, none of it.
No, they were, I'm sorry, the way they were. There were some down here on.
Okay, so you didn't go ahead and do those.
So, cuz the directive was, you know, the contractor was supposed to install the curb with continuous flow, so it more fell on. You know, what we were doing, so we talked with Larry and showed him where it needs to come back and then we both agreed with Kyle.
Right.
And then we moved forward.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's something that would would come out of the original contract invoicing anyway, because that was identified as such. When that's required.
Yeah.
You'll give us a bill for that and that'll come out of the the contingency fund. Okay.
And the idea is to not create downtime too. That's why we're to, you know, we don't want it, cuz we're going from one point to another. We're not stopping at every driveway, you know what I mean? The intent, you know, is also to. So we can keep moving and get this project done on time and not stop and start and stop and start, stop and start.
That's what was done on twelfth and thirteenth street, cuz I talked to a couple of homeowners there the other night. And as you go down twelfth and thirteenth, you can see that there are some more fresh concrete aprons. Some are two feet, some are five feet, some are ten feet, some are none at all, cuz they weren't required.
Yeah.
So it's really common sense.
We're getting it staked out now with a surveyor, so there'll be grade stakes, every, literally every ten feet.
Correct.
And then we're also having the surveyor mark everyone's driveway two foot back. So there's no ambiguity. So all the drivers will be marked at a two-foot stake and every ten foot down the road will be. Stakes with grade stakes. So we can come to the driveway and put our pins and pull the string from one end to the other. And we'll be able to see what the difference is in elevation at each driveway, but we can't do that until the grade stakes are in.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Shaw Elliott. And ask you if you've changed your mind yet.
Well, we wanna have consensus and we wanna be able to move this project forward. I do want to state that this is. A pretty big departure in in um a philosophical approach. In the sense that this is a public works project. It's for the public. The public as the community makes the decision and now we're customizing it a little bit. Um but through this discussion, I think we've, we've uh. Put some guardrails around that customization. Um and I think also eliminating a rebate is also supportive of just. The the community works that we're we're all in this together, we're all doing this. So uh I eh to, again, to reach a consensus, I can support. Um the project to move forward with the two-foot standard. With the option to opt out, should the homeowner at the homeowner's expense wish to make those modifications. Um we will then have inconsistency. We won't have a two-foot standard, but that's fine if that's what we wanna do.
You're saying at the homeowner's expense and there's no reimbursement?
Correct.
That's your, that's what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and I would also add an observation that, um, I have the pleasure of sitting here with several engineers and an operating engineer. I'm a lawyer, I'm not an engineer.
Right.
So in the future, it would be helpful that we had some illustrations. So I have to understand what an apron is and what, what is it going to look like? So in the future, when we have something like this, it's helpful to have an illustration, something to guide the discussion, so we know exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, I'm going to ask you one more question. So if, um, everyone here accepted the apron, and let's just say that each apron was ten dollars. All right? So we're spending ten dollars per apron. And then what's the difference in your mind between giving them a maximum of ten dollars to not accept the apron? Or, um, what, what's, why are you insisting on forcing them to pay on their own? Is it because you want the standard?
No, it's not that. Yeah, I think it's just a community project. It's a public works project. And so if we have cost-saving somewhere, that goes to the public good, and then you do another project or something else that happens.
There's not, there's no cost.
Wait, 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 one of the.
Or, or if there's a lack of an expenditure, a negative expense, in the sense of not paying back money. And it's just philosophically a very different thing, I think.
Something's not connected. Wait, wait, I'm not sure. There's no expenditures, there's no, this is, if we're going to put a two-foot apron in at ten dollars, okay? It's going to cost us ten dollars. If the homeowner says, hey, look, give me the ten bucks, it's going to cost me fifty bucks. Let that be their decision, okay? At the end of the day, we're spending ten dollars, okay? So let's get this thing done so these people can go home.
I think the point that, um, Member Shaw Elliott is making, uh, Member Bankard is understanding different philosophies. It's sort of like the, well, I saved by buying BOGO. If I wasn't going to buy it at all, did I really save money to begin with? I think what Member Shaw Elliott is saying is where we don't, where the city doesn't acquire the two-foot apron, that's ten dollars it does not have to spend. I agree, I understand your position that, well, it planned on spending it, um, but now it's not spending it. And I think her concern goes to the constitutional maxim in Florida, that public funds not be spent for private benefit. And where private citizens are opting out of a public project, and now funds are being spent to accommodate their customized design plan. I think that is the, the concern that Member Shaw Elliott is expressing. Noting that legal, you know, notation, I leave it to you folks to continue to resolve this. I'm not the policymaker. Um, my goal here in serving as your city attorney is to try and resolve the differences. And as you talk about standardizations, I just want to make clear, you're, you're having sort of two different parallel discussions about standardizations. Mr. Mayor, the discussion about standardization for purposes of a project is different than the standardization of the aesthetic impact thereafter that the ordinance would regulate. Um, you can have a standardized project and then not have a standardized aesthetic thereafter, if people tear it up, as you said, without consequence. So I just, sometimes we, we talk past each other. I just want to see this as the neutral, that's what I'm hearing in, in your discourse.
I would agree with you on the constitutional part. If we were talking about the valley curb, but now we're going into people's driveways.
In the right way.
In the right way, but we're still going into the person's driveway, and we're affecting the aesthetics of their driveway. So we should do something to compensate, because we're going to, we're going to tear up their driveway anyway. All right? So let them have the decision and say, hey, let me put it back to the way I wanted. I have to look at it every. All right, Mr. Roberts?
If, if the contractor could come out one more time. I just want to clarify something. I think we're getting a little bit off track regarding the payment and the costing. So right now with the contract, so help me understand if, if I'm not clear on this in my own head. So anytime you currently were to put an apron in, or anytime to take out pavers and reinstall them. Those costs are already identified in the contract.
Yes, sir.
It's not part of the original contract on this one. It comes out of the contingencies, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, so we're not, we're not losing or paying anything like that. That's already in the contract for the contractor to take care of both of those tasks, period.
Okay, all right. So what you're saying is that you have taken, eh, if, if a homeowner rejects the two-foot, um, apron, are you still, you're going to remove the pavers and then you're going to put them back at the same price, if I'm correct?
Correct, it's at the cost per the bid items that we bid on. But I have a, a little bit of a solution that might help.
Okay.
Okay, let's hear it.
So on the six, these six streets we've already done, we haven't had an issue with pavers, aprons, blah, blah, blah. The reason we haven't had an issue is we've worked together in the field with Larry, with Kyle. We've brought it up, they've been able to make a decision. I think we all agree that every driveway is its own, you know, its own different job, pretty much. You know, each driveway, it's its own job. Um, if you just give your city manager the, the leeway to make onsite decisions on how far back we have to go, whether we have to replace them in pavers, whether they have to replace them in the concrete, if these can, decisions could be made on the field with a representative from the city, working with the homeowner at the time that we're on the job, there, there shouldn't be any issues.
Under normal circumstances, I would agree with you. However, the city manager is the one who brought the, um, uh, the driveway adjustment options to us.
Yes.
To vote on.
I understand.
And I believe that that was at the recommendation of Mr. Flutie.
Yes.
Uh, so, um, Mr. Reefer, would you like to comment on that?
Well, every previous project of twelfth and thirteenth, that's what we did. We made the decision in the field. Um, again, we were doing, using a different method. We're matching more driveways, um, but there were situations where we had to pour different size aprons or adjust a certain amount of pavers. Um, my only concern is that I would like to readjust pavers, but if, if it's a paper driveway that, you know, the only way it's going to look right is we go ten feet, fifteen feet back. I don't think we need to incur that level of cost through the square footage of resetting that many pavers. Um, there's going to be situations where the apron's going to be the better solution. Um, but like I said, it's been worked out. You know, you, you didn't always have the happiest president, but eh, we got to a decision point and it was accepted. Right?
So based on that, what would you like to see happen tonight?
Based on that, I would like to see, um, we, at maximum, we set a limitation on how many square, or how many feet back from the curb we're gonna, we're going to play with. And if we can't do it with that, then we're going to find an alternative solution.
And I'm also, uh, I also heard the, uh, city attorney loud and clear. I know he's not telling me what to do or telling any of us what to do, but uh, I can read be, between the lines, uh, we may be opening ourselves up to uh, possible issues if we start handing out cash uh, for private ventures, uh, especially for property in, uh, for other people's, uh, property that was constructed within the right of way. So I think from, from my standpoint, that's off the table for me. Um, so Councilmember Shaw Elliott, would you like to make a motion?
We think for this, about this for a moment, but that, um, that basically we are setting a two-foot standard for maximum, right, for the apr- apron?
Yeah.
Unless.
So the engineer is confident that two feet can be, can achieve almost every driveway except for, I think, like a couple, he said.
Yeah. Um, so that we, we, um, we strive for a, a two-foot standard apron for all driveways. Um, subject to the city manager's discretion. And that we continue with the project. I mean, that, that's it.
And I, I, I think with the man, the, the last little bit of that harmonizing all the feedback is the manager asking for, to the extent you're giving him discretion to accommodate the facts on the ground, no pun intended, um, that it not exceed X feet. So if the city is going to, we, we encounter a problem on property Y, we're going to, we're going to try and do everything in two foot or less, but on property Y, we need to go seven feet. Well, the city's not going any further than X. Uh, I think that's the last little bit.
I think that that was five feet. And I need that with pavers primarily. And so, because pavers, pavers is the tricky part. You know, depending on what we're dealing with, is it going to work? Is it going to look right? Is it possible? If it's not, we'll know it.
Member Shaw Elliott, your motion just having a, a limit on how far that discretion will go by, by a measure of feet would be, I think, complete the, the guidance needed.
See, uh, so the, the, uh, establish a two-foot standard subject to the city manager's discretion not to exceed five feet.
So moved.
Is that, is that what you said?
Hmm.
Uh, do I have a second on that one?
I like, I'm just trying to listen to the input from the contractor and the city manager, and I don't.
Letting it drop.
Yes.
Okay, so the ma, uh, the motion fails.
I would like to make it as simple as possible. I would like to remove the other motion that I made, complete, can I do that? I just want that baby.
We would have to vote to, uh, to, uh.
On the one that was approved.
The, the, the concrete one was.
Here's what I'd like to propose. I'd like to make a motion as recommended by the contractor and responded by the city manager that he's comfortable with this, that we just allow the city manager to make any fear of decisions that are necessary within the scope of this project. And the only, the only way that he may have to come back would be if the distance from the edge of the gutter to where the work needed to be completed is more than ten feet. Anything ten feet and less, Kyle's going to take care of it, work with the contractor. This thing's going to get done, I'm confident of it. We don't need to put too many constraints around it and work. Just let Kyle do it. He's got good, he, he's smart, he knows how to do it. He's already got an animal out there watching the co, working with the contractor every day. And if they really need to speak with somebody smart, they can just call me, they got my cell phone. Just a joke. So Kyle will take care of it, and, and I don't think there's an issue. If, if Kyle asks for something, anything over ten feet would make him feel kind of out of bounds on that, that's fine, so we'll put that caveat in there.
Can I simplify your motion?
Absolutely.
So the motion, I, I think the motion is actually, uh, to approve, uh, the total of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and allow the city manager to manage this project as he sees fit.
Yes, sir.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I.
One more question. So city manager will have full discretion on each and everyone, every driveway, driveway?
I believe that's what, what I'm hearing.
I like it, Kyle, but I don't know if I could vote on something like that. Um, first of all, your, our ordinance says I think you have up to ten thousand dollars you can spend without city council approval, so it might violate that if there's a problem on somebody's driveway, I don't know.
But his job is to manage projects.
I believe that once he, if he was approved for this amount and, um, he needed to come back for more money to make the project work, we would have to approve that also. Uh, now that he, he does have a limitation that he, he can spend some.
Yeah.
But, uh, if it turned out to be just astronomical, uh, cost to accommodate, um, our residents, then, uh, he would have to come back to us and explain why and how much he needed.
I'm just saying, eh, this guy needs two thousand, this guy needs four thousand, this guy needs a thousand. Um, again, I disagree with our attorney on the constitutionality problem. We're not giving money away. We're just saying here, it's going to cost us this, it's going to cost, cost you that. But, hey, you got a second on this floor? Let's go to a vote.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
Any comments?
No. I, I think this is consistent with, uh, the way public's courts should work, and we have faith in our manager.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, um, I, uh, I owe you one for placing this agenda item on tonight's special meeting, uh, because, uh, it's, no matter what, you're never going to get everyone to agree. And ultimately, it is your job to manage the city, and it's our job to approve or, or disapprove what you recommend. Uh, so I'm going to, uh, I'm going to vote yes on this and, um, say that we move forward. Uh, I'm going to ask that you do everything that you can to stay within this budget, because this is a large amount of money you're asking for. And I would also ask that you work very closely with everyone here that has concerns about their paper driveway. All right? Um, so let, since this is a, a sensitive topic, let's go ahead and take it to a, a voice vote. Renee?
Councilmember Bankard?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes, and so it passes three to one, uh, seeing as we have no other items on the.
Do we need to rescind the earlier?
No. It's superseded.
Previous motion.
Uh, seeing as that we have no other items on the agenda, I would, uh, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I got to say it this time.
I would like to say, we're going to say.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Did you want to? I just wanted to say something to the citizens real.
You know what, eh, go ahead.
Thank you. So ju- just some information. Everybody who lives in this city has every right to question something that's going on in the, the home area. I support that one hundred percent. The one thing that I would like to ask the citizens to actually, I was going to say minimize, to speak directly to one of the contractors or the engineers that are working on projects. If you have a question, and people out there are probably smarter than me, you have background, you have a question that something's happening that you think may be an issue, please call the city manager. So that he can work with the contractor and or the engineer. Because what happens goes, what could happen and will happen if our city, um, those contractors start feeling like the last city in the British Army is one of each. Because we have too many citizens that are giving a hard time to the contractors and workers. Like, it's just human nature. Now, so the next time you go out to a building, the only people that are close is not going to be as many contractors building, and the ones that live there, they're going to cry. Because they take on a really, I really don't want to lose job, but to pay the tax, I will do it. So we need to help this city out by making sure that we do everything we can to the contractors and the engineers and everybody that does work for us to really work for us. That, that's the direction we want to go. So just, if you have concerns, one hundred percent, you should go into address your concerns. But please try to view those concerns and questions to the city manager so he can handle it or she can handle it appropriately, in order to really help everybody in the long run. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I will consider that an aye, and this.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.